This is from our study session on July thirteenth. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is Roy, a motion to approve.
Looks like Roy had the motion. Is there a second?
Commissioner Howard, I'll second it.
All right.
Commissioner Stottermeyer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
I vote yes, except for abstain from the study session minutes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. Now, the items of business, the first of which would be to consider for approval, a contract for commercial appraisal services for the 2021 valuation year. And we should have Jamie Wilson on.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Sure can. Good morning, Jamie. Go ahead.
Great, great. This is, this will be Gene's third year doing this. I've been very satisfied with his work, and he's been very efficient. We've gone over his, his contract for the year, and he has increased his fee from thirty-five to thirty-seven thousand five hundred, part of which is he has to carry some E and O insurance for five years following his term of service with us. So, he's just covering that. And then, the only other changes that have happened are some minor record-keeping changes to update years and deadlines that he has to meet, as well as changed how he will handle informal appeals. Before, he had provided us with a certain set of hours, forty hours of informal hearing time, and, and just the scheduling just didn't work out. So, we've just broken it down to forty appeals, which should more than handle any issues that would arise throughout the year for, for the informal level for commercial. So, that, that is about it, unless you all have any questions for me?
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I have, I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Dickinson.
So, it says it will not exceed thirty-seven five. What, what do we end up at for a lot, for the last year?
Um, I believe it was, it, well, it was, it was thirty-five, and then there was some, there was some small claims hearing, um, work that was done that I believe was for another eight hundred, and that should close it out for the year.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Is there another question?
Cole, this is Derek. Um, this, this is a contract that I recommend that we incur, or that we go ahead and execute. Um, this individual's done a fantastic job for us. He has provided Jamie a lot of relief. Um, initially, we were looking for our own commercial appraiser or deputy appraiser, because that's kind of the model that we had used, but Gene's done so well that, and frankly, this is, this, this represents a cost savings to the county. Um, you're not gonna get a deputy appraiser in here, salary and benefits for thirty-seven five. Um, probably not anywhere close to that. And so, um, with the job he's done, the rapport that he's built with Jamie and his staff, I think this is a no-brainer. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for the additional background there. Sounds like we have a pretty good delay on the phone today. So, if you think I'm talking over you, I'm not. I just haven't heard what you're saying yet. So, um, is there a motion to continue the contract for commercial valuations, uh, for the 2021 valuation year?
I would make that motion. This is Commissioner Dickinson.
All right. Is there a second?
Stottermeyer, second.
Commissioner Howard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. Our second item of business today is a rezoning application. Larry Walrath, our planning and zoning director, should be on. Are you on, Larry?
I'm on, Mr. Chairman.
I can hear you. Go ahead.
The first item that we have for consideration on, on the zoning issues this morning is a HURT rezoning. This is a request to rezone three acres from an A1 to the R3 Single Family Residential, uh, zoning district. This matter was heard by the planning commission at their last meeting, and they have unanimously recommended through the county commissioners to approve this rezoning. We gave notice to twelve surrounding property owners. Only one, uh, person was, uh, somewhat upset because he felt that the small parcel was going to result in a new home being built much closer to his property than if it had been left in an agricultural zone. However, there was already an existing residence on that property, uh, a large tract, and we only allow one residence per lot of tract. So, uh, it was necessary for them to go through the zoning and lot division to allow for the, the granting of this three acres to a relative for, uh, future development. I have nothing further to add unless any of you have questions.
I'm sure, Larry, this is Don. I'm asking a question. I know, I probably know the answer already, but, uh, three acres. Uh, I know you don't have to do it yet because, uh, but has there been any kind of testing at all to make sure septic system will work on this three acres?
The, uh, environmental department, uh, here has looked at this, uh, request and feels that the soil profiles will substantiate a, a septic system rather than have to go to a lagoon. Otherwise, we would have required the RE zoning, which is a five-acre minimum, which allows, uh, the, uh, developmental use of, of, uh, lagoons rather than the, just the septic tank. So, I think that we have a commitment for the water, and the soil profile looks like it's positive.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Doesn't sound like there's any other questions. Uh, is there a motion to approve the rezoning application and amend the, uh, county zoning map accordingly for the application that's in front of us?
I'll make, this is Don. I'll make a approval rezoning application two oh, two five, eight, one, seven, five, eight.
All right. Is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. Our third item of business is rezoning application two thousand five, seventeen fifty-seven. Go ahead, Larry.
This, uh, request is filed by Ed Smith. The purpose for this rezoning is to correct a failed sanitation facility. The existing home is on one lot. They are requesting that that lot be merged with approximately four acres that they're buying, and that does require then a rezoning of the four acres from an A1 zoning district to the R, uh, E, which is the next zone that, that we would allow, uh, residents in and accommodate what the applicants are wanting to achieve with the correcting the existing sanitation facility. But it also requires then that the little one-acre lot be a part of that rezoning, so that the whole site now will be a five-acre, uh, residential estate, uh, zoning, and will accommodate then the corrections necessary to the sanitation system. Uh, again, the planning commission looked at this and, and felt that it does satisfy all of the criteria of our zoning and comprehensive plan requirements, and have ordered a recommendation to the county commissioners to approve the rezoning request as submitted. I have nothing further unless you folks have, uh, any question.
All right. Doesn't sound like it. Is there a motion to approve rezoning application two thousand five, seventeen fifty-seven, and amend the county zoning map accordingly?
Commissioner Howard, I'll make the motion.
Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Larry.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I do have the resolutions here. If you want to swing by my office after the meeting, you can sign those.
I'll make sure they get signed. Thanks, Larry. Our fourth item of business is to discuss the twenty-twenty Franklin County landfill report. David Lee's on the line.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
As you, uh, excuse me?
I don't know where it came from. Go ahead.
Sorry. Uh, as you recall, a few months ago, we came before you and asked to update a landfill life expectancy calculation, so that we would know, uh, where we're at with the remaining life of the C and D landfill. Um, and the C and D stands for construction and demolition. Um, so, we engaged SCS engineers, uh, who has historically been our landfill engineering consultant, and they prepared, uh, they prepared that life expectancy calculation. Uh, staff felt it was necessary to not only share with the commission the results of that, uh, calculation, but also to walk you through, uh, where we've been and where we would like to go. Uh, so, uh, the report that I provided to you and, and, uh, if you could follow along with me, starts out with a aerial view of how the landfill was in two thousand four, prior to, uh, the, the, uh, updated a permit to go to the three cells that we currently enjoy. So, the, uh, the second aerial picture is the, uh, is a picture that was taken whenever they updated the survey just, uh, a month or two ago. Uh, so, it does show current conditions, and you can also see the outline of the approximate, uh, three cells that are permitted currently. So, through this, um, through this process, this analysis, staff came up with three major concerns, and they're all related. Uh, the first is that the life expectancy from the twenty-fourteen, uh, calculation was thirty-four to fifty-one years, uh, depending on the, the volume of, uh, material that was deposited in the landfill. Uh, based on the current landfill life expectancy calculation, that has dropped down to seven to nine years, again, depending on, uh, the volume of material being deposited. The seven to nine years is, is a concern, because that doesn't, uh, it seems like a long time, but we have to use those, those years wisely. The second concern is that the, um, landfill hasn't seen a significant increase in disposal rates from just under thirty-seven hundred tons in twenty-ten to a record high of, of just over eleven thousand tons last year. Um, and then, the third concern is that over the same period, our waste density has decreased from, uh, just over a thousand tons per cubic yard down to just under eight hundred tons per cubic yard. That may not seem like a lot, but the tighter that density is, um, the more airspace we have remaining. And that's, that's the whole deal with the, uh, the C and D landfill. We have, and that's what that seven to nine years represents. So, where the elevations are today, there is seven to nine years of, of material that we can add on top of all of that to complete this permit. And so, those, those concerns are, uh, significant, and we need to start addressing them, and this is the, kind of, the first step in that. So, to review some of the recent activities that staff has undertaken, we've reviewed existing documentations. We've engaged with, uh, SCS engineers to update the life expectancy calculations with new current, uh, topography information. Uh, we've reviewed current compaction methods with staff, and we've had outside representatives come in and, and talk to us about what they see, uh, initially. Uh, we've researched transfer station C and D landfill fees for area landfills, and then we've also researched, uh, landfill equipment options. So, our objective is to mitigate the concerns that we have. So, our, our objective, objective is moving forward. We want to, um, work to increase the waste density back to twenty-fourteen levels or greater. We want to equip the staff with training, tools and training necessary to efficiently handle the C and D waste material. We want to methodically plan for future expansion and/or relocation of the existing C and D landfill. And the last one, we want to ensure the long-term financial security of the solid waste special caps fund. And so, in order to meet those objectives, we've identified some, some needs that we would like to discuss with you, and we have some recommendations, um, uh, a little bit later here as well. So, we want to consider increasing the percentage of deposits from the special caps fund from the current ten percent that, uh, uh, ten percent of all the revenue that comes in to the landfill goes into the special caps fund. We want to increase that to twenty percent. Uh, we want to consider increasing the transfer station and C and D landfill fees. Uh, we would like to acquire a landfill compactor. We want to consider an expansion feasibility study, and we also want to, um, um, recommend an operational assessment and training program. And then, we also have some follow-up plans that, uh, that we will incorporate. Uh, some of these things are already ongoing, but we want to expand upon that, um, to make sure that whatever we do next, that we are, um, doing the most that we can, the best that we can, to make sure that we are using that landfill safely and efficiently. So, we would like to, uh, if we're able to put some of these, uh, programs in place, we would like to update that annual life expectancy calculation, at least for the, uh, next few years, to make sure that the changes that we're recommending making, uh, and the additional equipment that we're recommending are truly having the effect that, uh, that we anticipate. Uh, we'll also review the, um, uh, C and D landfill information quarterly with all staff. Um, I'm not sure that they have been getting that information, so we will update them on the volumes that we've taken in and, and how that affects what we're doing out there. We'll also contru-, uh, uh, conduct monthly safety training, uh, which will be led by management staff. Uh, the annual KDHE required training is already occurring, and we would like to have an outside voice on that. And so, we would like to bring in a consultant to do the annual training. And then, uh, we would like to find, uh, training opportunities to be able to send our staff to, uh, on equipment and landfill placement and compaction methods. Um, and so, those are, that's the general outline of the information that is contained in the, the ten attachments to follow. So, if you turn to attachment one, that is the, uh, copy of the twenty-fourteen, uh, study that SCS performed. And in that, on page three and four of that, um, of that study, you can see I've highlighted a couple of, a couple of, uh, pieces of information where it calculates the pounds per cubic yard, which is the waste density, and also the life expectancy calculations there as well. In the, uh, there's a graph there that shows that in, uh, two thousand six, we were about sixty-five hundred tons, uh, per year, and that dropped, kind of corresponding with the recession, down to less than three thousand. Um, and so, um, that showed a downward trend, but in, you know, we know that in twenty-seventeen, those, those numbers turned around. So, attachment number two is the current study that SCS just completed, the first of June. And in that, they tell us that, uh, our compaction rates have dropped, uh, that we're not getting as much material into that cubic yard as we were previously, which is a, a major concern. And it also, um, shows the, the, uh, on the third page, has all of the, um, permit information, discusses the, uh, the life expectancy, assuming certain tonnages. Um, and we are working on the assumption that it's gonna be in the seven to nine-year range. Um, and then, we've got a few maps, again, that show the current contours. Uh, the second map shows the, um, all the permitted final grade contours. And it's kind of hard to see those slopes, but it is a very gentle slope. I think most of those are, um, uh, five percent slopes, which are, um, fairly flat in, in the, you know, so it's not gonna be a, um, a pointy top hill, basically. So, it'll be fairly flat and rolling. The third graph, the third map there shows, uh, the areas where we have remaining capacity. The purple areas being, uh, that we have an additional fifteen to twenty feet that we can go vertically in those areas to add material. And so, uh, what we're planning to do now, what we are doing now, is, uh, we've been working in cell two, and we are going to push the face of the, the material being delivered to the east to take, uh, to fill up cell one, uh, rather than diving into cell three right at this point. So, we're gonna move back to the east and fill that area before we move back to the west. And then, moving on to, uh, attachment three, shows the, uh, tonnage volumes and how they have increased over the last three and a half, uh, three and a half years. So, in twenty-seventeen, our volumes jumped, uh, from just under four thousand up to just under ninety-four hundred tons, and the volumes have remained steady pretty much through there, through those years. Last year was a record year at eleven thousand tons, and, uh, I know that this graph shows eighty-eight tons, but, uh, the new June numbers, uh, were already at fifty-five hundred tons for the year, so we're on pace to match last year's record high in tonnage received at the landfill, which is a, uh, significant thing. So, now we move into the, the memos and recommendations. Um, the first has to do with the transfer station and C and D landfill financials. Uh, as you, I'm sure you're all aware, the solid waste division is self-funded. It's funded through fees generated at the transportation and C and D landfill, along with sale of commodity, commodities at the recycling center, although, um, the recycling center doesn't add much to the, to the bottom line there. So, that income also covers not only all the expenses, but it funds both the special caps fund and the, um, RSWC fund or the closing cost fund. As I mentioned earlier, ten percent of every deposit into the solid waste fund, uh, goes into the, um, special caps, and fifty cents of every ton brought into this transfer station and C and D landfill goes to the closing cost fund. So, over the last several years, uh, that special caps fund is, has, um, uh, brought in just over nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, while the solid waste account fund, which is where we pay all of our expenses, has had an end-of-year average of almost three-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. And you'll see the, the graphics on the next page that, uh, that show what those numbers have been. So, we think that by increasing the deposit into the special caps run, fund from ten percent to twenty percent will have a minimal impact on the ability, uh, to, to pay our expenses and fund the solid waste division. Um, and so, you can see that, you know, on the following charge, roughly ninety-five thousand dollars, um, would have been generated in addition, uh, additionally over the last five and a, five and a half years if we had had that twenty percent, uh, in place at that time. So, um, in that five years, according to that chart, had we, uh, the, the total over those five years was nine-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars, had we had the additional twenty pen, twenty percent, uh, it would have been, um, one million, uh, forty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars. Um, and we would still have had a significant end-of-year balance. Now, twenty-twenty is just based on through the June numbers, so that, those will fluctuate a little bit, but you can see we had a healthy balance at the end of year, uh, for each of the last five years. So, we have, uh, our current balances as of the end of June. We have one-point-two million dollars in the special caps fund. We have a hundred-and-forty-six thousand in the closure fund. Uh, the solid waste fund, which again is where we pay our bills and expenses, that is sitting at seven-hundred and, almost seven-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. While budgeted, we have a unencumbered balance remaining of seven-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. So, uh, six months through the year, we almost have enough in our special solid waste fund to cover our balance. to cover our balance through the end of the year, according to the budget. So we feel like the, the financial health of the solid waste division is excellent, and it's our intent to ensure that the financial health remains healthy in perpetuity. So these suggested increases that we're talking about are meant to help offset the, the future costs of, of expansion on the existing landfill, or if we have to look off-site, the, the costs associated with moving off-site. We don't know for sure what all of those costs are going to be, because we haven't started that process and we haven't gone through there. One of the things that staff is recommending is that we approve a contract with SES engineers to perform an expansion and feasibility evaluation study, which is located, that, that proposal is a little bit further back in the attachments. And that will, we believe that we can re-permit this, these existing cells, this existing site, to go higher in elevation. When we had a meeting with, with SES several weeks ago, they mentioned that one of the considerations when these three cells were permitted, one of the considerations was to go much higher, I think to the tune of additional 50 feet higher at the highest peak. The commission at that time did not, and this is, this is just information that we've heard, the commission at that time was not in favor of having such a high elevation at, at that location. Its, its staff's opinion that the cost savings by staying on-site will far outweigh any negative impacts of, of, of the looks and feel of that landfill once we're completely done. So if we can go higher vertically, that will allow us to stay on this site for years to come. But through this evaluation process, we will be able to really hone in on that and focus on what we need to do, so that the steps that we take from here going forward are done, you know, that we have a, a goal in, in mind, and we're taking steps to reach that goal, so that we use the dollars wisely, so that we are not caught, you know, seven years from now, having to rush through the process to get things permitted, that we are doing things properly and methodically. You can, you know, the, the process to get a new landfill permitted is anywhere from two to three years sometimes, and could cost around a million, a million dollars, depending on the many variables involved in this type of project. So we want to, today, in the next, you know, this year, we would like to see and plan for where we want to go, so we can start, again, start making decisions to get us there. So moving to attachment five.
Hey, David.
Yes?
Um, you're, you're basically saying this, but I, I want to, I guess, just throw the question out there, is that your belief today, and I understand we, we want a contract with SES to help us understand this more, but is it your position today that from a long-term financial perspective, doing what we can to eat the landfill where it is and maximize the use, whether that be expanding the footprint horizontally, so to speak, or doing so vertically, is it your belief that that is the, the better course of action from a financial perspective?
Without a doubt, without a doubt. This, if we can stay on-site, we can continue to utilize our transfer station building, our scale house, our scale, our infrastructure that we have for that site, so we can stay right where we're at and continue operating for, you know, I hate to throw out any numbers, but hopefully for the next 20-plus years.
Okay. And that is what, and for the commissioners, to be very clear, today is an information session. What we would like to do is bring certain items back next week, after you've had a chance to digest all of this. They will each be individual items with cover sheets, kind of walking through each request, so I don't want you to, to feel like there's an ask coming at the end of today. But back to you, David, this is exactly what SES would do for us, correct? Is just help us with options on what we may be able to do on-site to prolong the life, correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, David.
You're quite welcome. So there are several other attachments. One is related to the, the landfill fees. We would like to recommend that we slightly increase both the fee at the, the CND landfill from $31 a tonne to $32.50 a tonne, and at the transfer station from $41 a tonne to $42 a tonne. But we want to leave the minimum charge at $10. So the vast majority of the citizens out there that bring material to the CND or to the transfer station are coming in and only being charged $10, and that will remain so. It's just, it's been well over five years since we have increased any fees at the transfer station and landfill, and we think that it's appropriate now, in light of the things that are in front of us, to pick that up just a bit, to help, again, make sure that we have money available at that time. And so we've looked at the surrounding landfills, Miami County, Osage, Lynn, Anderson, and Coffey, along with reaching out to a couple of the private Kansas City area landfills, and that information is, is listed at the bottom of that memo. And so I, I don't think that raising these, our, our minimum charges, our tonnage charges are going to adversely affect the folks bringing material here. It's still going to be cost-effective for them to do so.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I have one quick question. You did say that you have a lot of Douglas County tags that come through, but there is no information on Douglas County. Do you have any idea what Douglas County charges?
Douglas County does not have a landfill. They send, all of their material goes to the Ham landfill, the same place that our transfer station material goes to. And, and I, I don't know, that's, let's see. Yeah, I did not get a number from that Ham quarter, or Ham landfill up there, but it, again, where we are seeing a lot of Douglas County tags coming to us. So that leads me to believe that, again, the, the fees at those larger private quarries are more, much more expensive than what they are here in Franklin County.
Would that be an option for us if we ran out of space eventually?
Um, it, it, well, in, in Douglas County, the, the waste haulers are taking it, you know, it's not coming to a transfer station in Douglas County, it's going directly to that quarry. And so, or that landfill, I'm sorry. Hams also operates a lot of quarries that we utilize. So the CND material, you know, people are driving up there to deliver it there, but they're also coming to Franklin County. I, quite frankly, I, I suppose that, that we could send everything through the transfer station, but I'm not sure that that would be the best way to, best way to handle it.
All right, David, do you have any more, kind of, the way I was, this is a big conversation with a lot of info and several topics. I'm trying to maybe let you go through all your info, and then we'll circle back around and break it down by the individual topics and have discussion on that, especially since we're, you know, doing this over phone. Do you have any more info you want to get out before we maybe circle back around and hit the topics individually?
Well, the, the last one I would like to, you know, we, staff is recommending that we look at another piece of equipment, and that is a landfill compactor that is specifically designed to work on, on landfill sites. The wheels and tips, along with the weight, the increased weight of the machine helps to crush and shred the material, so you get better density. And I've got on attachment number eight, you will see that we had, had this graph prepared for us, assuming 11,000 tons per year, if our compaction remains at 780 pounds per cubic yard, we're going to be out of airspace in January of 2028. If we increase the capacity, or the density to 1,100 tons, or 1,100 pounds per cubic yard, we get an additional three years out of that same landfill with the same field using this, and we think that we can get this additional compaction using a compactor. So that is, the rest of the attachments are, are just the proposals from SES on the various things that we've asked them for. So I'm, I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you may have at this point, and I appreciate you bearing with me through all this information.
All right. Well, I appreciate all this good info. I'd love to see decisions made with lots of information and analysis like you're providing, and a great example of, I think, what we like to see. Again, it's important to note, like Derek said, that we're not being asked to take action today, but I do think David's probably going to be looking for some kind of consent as far as what to bring to the meeting, our next meeting. And I'm going to go off of the page entitled CND landfill needs, and we're just going to kind of go down there. That way we can hit these individual topics one at a time, and it maybe keeps the conversation a little more organized and thoughts in line. So the first of which is whether to increase the percentage of deposits in the special caps fund from the 10 to 20%. There's attachment with the information that David went over. Any commissioners have comments, questions on this one?
Commissioner Don, I, I don't have any problem increasing that.
Mr. Thalmar, I wouldn't either.
Commissioner Howard, I wouldn't either.
Commissioner Dickinson, I'm good. Yeah, you gave a lot of good information, and you presented it very well, David, so appreciate your.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, I will tell you that if we increase it to 20%, and if our volumes go down and, and revenues go down, we can als, always move that back to 10%. This is a, an administrative thing that we can do to be able to protect ourselves, and we will certainly pay attention to that on a monthly basis to make sure that it's still appropriate to pull to 20%. So we'll, okay.
All right. Well, I agree. Our revenues are looking great, and there's plenty of reason to do this, and a lot of reasons not to. So it looks like that'd be a good thing to bring to our next meeting.
Well, and Colton, this is Derek. I don't even, I don't even think we, on something like this, I'm not even sure if the board is generally consent to it. I don't think we need a, a motion to do that. I mean, this is more of just a procedural budgetary function, so I'm happy to bring it back if you all want an item, otherwise we can just make this particular adjustment.
It really doesn't sound like there's any need to, or just putting it internally in different pockets, we're not spending it, so it's just a procedural deal, so unless anybody speaks up, we'll just go with that. But it sounds like you definitely have consent to move forward with that. Next on the list would be the transfer station and CND fill, uh, fees, and possibly increasing those. You know, I had some thoughts on, on this. I'm not completely against it personally, but I think maybe a few things we want to consider. I'd sure like to see the study back, feasibility study, to get an idea of what costs are going to be in front of us before we look at fees down the road. Again, not something I'm absolutely against. Looking at the comparison to other counties, this would put us a little above the middle of the pack on the, towards the slightly higher side, very slightly, but that was a concern. And then also, a lot of the other counties have different rates for internal and, from citizens of the county and out of, out-of-county people using the facility. And maybe that's something we want to consider. I can imagine the logistics of that, though, being, being a real pain for staff, especially if we're busy. I don't know if that's extra work we'd want to throw on them, but I don't know if that's something, personally, I'd be ready to, to jump on quite yet, but let's hear from everybody else. Mr. Howard?
Yeah, I kind of agree. I think we're, you know, if we have a lot of them coming to us from different counties, obviously our fees are probably a little lower than what they can do in their areas, so I think a slight raise would make sense. I think the other issue is if you get it too high, a lot of that stuff's not going to come to us, it's going to get dumped to other places that we don't want it. But, yeah, I could see a, a small raise, but not, not a substantial one at this time.
All right. Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah, I don't think a raise like that, but the one question I keep having that has not really been addressed is, do we have any idea why, in the last four or five years, we have such a substantial increase? Because we wouldn't even be looking at this at all if our numbers would have been what they were in 2014. I know last year there was the flood, and we had a pretty good hailstorm that went through our county, but, but 2020 has not seen those kind of things, and yet our numbers are really back up there, so do we know?
We, we believe that the, the increase corresponds with the improvement in the economy, and also the building projects that have gone on inside the county during this time period. The hospital has made several different building additions. The school district here in Ottawa has, has followed suit. There's been an increase in, in housing starts over this time period. Remodels, all of these things have all contributed to the increase in tons. And looking forward, although we have, we have the uncertainty surrounding COVID-19, and also uncertainty around the election, the upcoming election, we're still seeing new houses being built. We are hearing of, of potential things, new businesses coming to the area. There, we have Proximity Park that we have staff. FCDC is working very, very hard to fill that space, and so all of these are factors that, when looking ahead, indicate that we're going to continue to see, I'll say, you know, in the 8,000 to 9,000 tons range, which is still double to triple what we saw during the recession years. And so, again, then these are things that concern us going forward if we don't take action now.
All right. Don, did you have some thoughts on this?
Yeah, as a, setting on the solid waste authority board, of course, I'd see more of this, and so I get to see all counties, I just don't get to just see ours. And I know it's an ongoing thing in all the counties right now. I know Anderson County, I just heard a report on them here, why, they're just getting bombarded. And why Anderson County? You know, they, he totally couldn't give an answer to everything, but a lot of the same things that David said, and it's just, I don't know why, you know, it's just one of them things. And it's just, I don't know why, you know, it's just one of them things, that things are, numbers are going way up. And just to reiterate a little bit, I was here when it was decided not to go for the higher, but you got to remember, when we was looking at it, we were talking 50 years down the road.
Right.
Looking 50 years down the road, that wasn't one of our primary worries.
Sure.
That with 50 years, we didn't figure any of us, basically me, didn't figure I'd be around even to see it or make that decision. So here I am, I mean, you know, so it's just one of them things that wasn't dreamed about 10 years ago to happen at this time. We didn't have to begin to make that decision. I think the idea of better or newer equipment to professionally do it, I know it's a lot of money, but if it can get us another three to five years down the road, even on what we have, would be a huge, huge thing. And I know when I toured with everybody else from the solid weight board, went up to the Douglas County where our transfer stuff goes and viewed all the different things that they were doing and better equipment and newer equipment and more engineered for today's life, much many more years we're going to get out of that up there just because of the, not from being stupid or silly, just making wise choices and going ahead and spending the money for different things that, that sometimes it's one of the things you, hindsight, but if you can do it and have a wide decision made by a good company like this that did a, a good breakdown of it, they don't have anything, a dog in the fight except for make sure they give us good advice. So I think David and this, this process has given us a lot of good advice to move forward.
What are your thoughts on the landfill fees, Don? You ready to?
Yeah, I'd like a little more, little more, maybe discussion on that one.
Okay.
I'm kind of like you, I'm not totally against it. I just want to hear a little more discussion on it, a little more on this. Maybe our local delivery people is not causing this dilemma. They're part of it, but they're not, you know, they're not the, the whole problem. So I'd like to have a little more discussion on that one.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Dunn, what are your thoughts on the landfill fees?
Well, my thoughts is it's good to stay at $10 at the minimum, not raise that. And just like Mr. Howard said, raising the fees too much would be incentive for people to start dumping in the ditches around the county and that would be a more cost for us. So I want to see more about maybe not raising the fees very much at all.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we're not quite ready to take the leap on that one. Maybe a little more research and there's still a question mark of exactly what our future costs are. So let's move down the list to the acquisition. Sorry, you drive. Yeah, go ahead.
Before you, before we move on, I do want to let you know that we have to, by statute, have to have the fee set prior to July 1st. And so we won't be able to, even if you were all 100% in an agreement, we wouldn't be able to do that until after the 1st of the year. So that gives us plenty of time to, if we do the feasibility study, we'll have that information and we'll also be able to gather more data to look at possibly who's coming into our landfill and the reasons why. So we'll be able to, we've got, you know, six months to, to work on that. So I'll, we'll get started on that here shortly.
All right. Next on the list would be the, talking about a possible acquisition of a landfill compactor. There's numerous, six, seven, and eight attachments are what they're numbered on this item. And primarily, this would, a lot of good information. There's a graph here showing that it increases our efficiency of the facility. You know, the graph shows that it add only a couple of years and then just as is, and that kind of makes you think, man, that's a lot of money. These are just my thoughts. That's a lot of money for only a couple of years, but what that's really telling you is it increases our efficiency 20 to 30%. And we're not only going to be here a couple more years, we're going to be here for much longer. It's a necessary service, so. And that machine will certainly last a lot longer than a few more years. Any info you think we need beyond that, David, that you've already given us before we start discussing this?
I will tell you that the current track loader that we use out there worked, worked great when we were getting the 3,500 ton range. We had plenty of time to push the material and work the material and to really get the compaction that we needed because the material came very slowly and the operator had plenty of time to take care of those things. In fact, often would spend half a day working at the recycling center because there just wasn't that much volume. The way it is today, there are many days where he is, the operator is, is in that machine continuously. We don't have the, he doesn't have the time to take care of the other maintenance items around the landfill, like mowing and, and putting cover material and those sorts of things, simply because of the volume of material that's coming into the site. And the weight of that track loader and the amount of material that it is compacting, just based on the width of the tracks, is almost, you know, a little over half of what it would be if we upgraded to the compactor. Plus, the weight of the compactor is an additional 20,000 pounds. And it, the compactor is designed specifically to crush and break down, shred the material rather than just pushing it and, and, you know, the tracks don't have a lot of ability to crush and shred like the, the attachments on the wheels of the compactor.
A new compactor, of course, is quite expensive and I'm sure it's not something that would appear on our agenda as soon as next week. There'd be, but if we do show some interest, there'd be a lot of things for you to work on as far as new or used or what's even available right now in stock. And is that correct, David?
We have a, we have a couple of quotes already. We occasionally, a, a late model compactor comes up. We missed out on one earlier this year when we just, we didn't have all the information ready to present to you. I do have an attachment that shows a proposal for a machine that we could acquire within three or four weeks. And, and I do have another one for another new machine. Once the discounts are taken into consideration, it's, it's just under $500,000. So it is quite expensive. We can certainly look for a used machine. The benefit of, of a new machine is warranty and, and, you know, the life of the machine. We feel like we could get 15 to 20 years out of a new compactor. It would of course be less than that if we went with a used machine.
And to be clear, you are recommending that we acquire a compactor? Is that, that's correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do you have a recommendation as far as wait for, see if we can acquire a used one or the benefits of a new machine or what are your thoughts there?
Well, I, I believe we're going to be hopefully on this landfill for the foreseeable future and having a new compactor to, to be able to utilize right off the bat where we've got the warranties and the, all the, the other perks that come with a new machine. I would recommend a, a new machine and I would recommend buying that, financing that over a course of, period of time in order to decrease the, the impact on our special caps fund so that it can continue to grow while making these payments.
Okay. Yeah, it's a lot easier to justify the cost of a new machine when you spread it out over 20 years or 15 years. So let's start talking about this. I think I'll go backwards in order. Commissioner Dunn, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are positive for a compactor, but also I think we ought to look at the heights again. I think that changes the dynamics if we revisit the height of the landfill now. And we had a compactor and increased height, that might increase the years, more than three years, you know, down the road. So I look at both of those.
Commissioner Dunn, that, that's exactly right. If we, the increased efficiency of a, of a landfill compactor over what we have currently will definitely extend the life of, of whatever we decide to permit next. If we go higher, we'll get more years based on the, the efficiency of this machine.
That's, that's my thoughts.
All right. Thanks. Commissioner Stotlemeyer, what are your thoughts on acquiring a landfill compactor?
I agree it's a lot of money, but I also agree that's why we collect the funds and if it can make the way we operate more efficient, and we're using the funds that is collected to do that job. So, and it may be even we're able to keep our charges down.
Sure.
Just because we're doing more of an efficient job for the community. So I believe David's ended in the right track. I want to, you know, commend him on that part of it. And if we'd have done this several years ago, which you can't talk about it now, we might have gained another five years. So, you know, so I think David's on the right track and, and I think I'd be fairly well favorable.
All right. Commissioner Dickinson, what are your thoughts on the acquisition of a landfill compactor?
I did have one question for David. This is Commissioner Dickinson. So if you get, if you did get this compactor, is there a chance that you can then go back over the, and, and the stuff that's already there and compact it more or move it and compact it more so that we could even gain more? Or is that pretty much a done deal and what it is?
Well, we will, as you saw in the, the graphic that depicted the remaining areas on the landfill that was color coded, we will be utilizing that machine to spread material over that whole site. So we will be compacting that a little bit as we go. So we will gain some just by putting additional weight and, and again, the, the, the wheels on that will in effect benefit us over material that, that we've already placed. I don't see the, I'm, I'm not sure that we have the time to uncover some of that material and recompact it, but certainly if the time is available, that is something that, that we could do kind of as a side project.
Just to continue, this is Commissioner Dickinson. I, I think we've always had a pretty healthy amount in that account and sometimes we wonder what we're going to do with it. So, I mean, I think definitely this is what it's for, to help with whatever cost we needed to do for the landfill. So I think I probably would be, be ready to go ahead and get more information or, yeah.
Of course, by what we're going to do, it that you're referencing, I think, assume the, that there's a statute that requires us to, we can't use this, these funds for anything other than landfill operations or waste. So for instance, we could use them to offset a cost that might be otherwise paid for in property tax or anything like that. They're, they're really siloed to just this use, so. Commissioner Howard, do you think to add on this?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm definitely in favor of purchasing a compactor. Now, the new compared to the used one, problem with buying used, if you can find one that's a couple of years old and got a lot of life left in it, that might be a good thing. The other part of purchasing used is if you're getting one that's on the downhill side of what it has left in it. So it's always kind of a tough situation when you talk about buying used, how good a used you can get. So I would probably have to go along with David on probably looking at a new one spread out over a few years to pay for it.
All right. Sounds good. Well, it sounds like you have some direction there, David. Anything you need to add before we move down the list?
I, I don't believe so. Thank you.
Okay. Next would be the expansion feasibility study. Anything to add before we start talking about this, David?
Just let you know that the engineers would work with the county to identify priorities and confirm our, our desires for the, for the landfill. And so that would all be part of the evaluation. They would work hand in hand with us. So I feel good about SES. They are industry experts and they have intimate knowledge of this particular landfill due to their historical work with us.
This is staff recommendation that we do this, and I believe, I'm not on that page, the cost was $16,000, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Commissioner Howard, what are your thoughts on this?
Yeah, I'm, probably a good idea.
All right.
Probably a good idea to have professional help before we're going to spend this kind of money anyway.
You bet. Commissioner Dickinson?
I think we all know that we are needing to stay there if we can. And the only way we're going to be able to do that is to have more information. So yes, I would be, I would be interested in getting more information.
All right. Commissioner Stotlemeyer?
Yeah, I, I agree with him, they need to go forward. Just the longer we wait to do that, I mean, they may save us $16,000 just with some of their suggestions and ideas. It may really, in the end, may not end up costing us anything, so in actuality, if they can find a way that we can really improve ourselves. So I think I'd go along with it, yeah. I know I would.
Good deal. All right. Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, I'd, I'd go along with it because it takes so long to get a landfill approved that we got to stay ahead of, ahead of that process, so I'd go for it.
All right. And I agree. I think if we do nothing else, we need to do this. It answers, remove a lot of question marks that are in front of us so we can make better decision. I saw, David, you noted that it would, look at adding elevation or other locations. Did, will it also consider opening other cells? I mean, for instance, we have like the brush area, the borrow pit, the gun range and things like that?
We are going to look at everything on site to, to see how we can more efficiently utilize the space that we have, the footprint that we have. That, that definitely involves going higher. It also involves potentially reaching into some of these areas that we have other uses that are currently being used for other things. Everything's on the table.
All right. Very well. Next on the list is the operational assessment and training, opposed to the expansion feasibility study, which would pretty much tell us what we can do. This would help us with information on how we do it. Is that fair to say, David?
That is correct. It's, it's kind of a two-part, two-part proposal. The, the, the operational assessment, that is, they have landfill experts and they are proposing to, after, why did we get a new compactor? And after we have had said compactor for a month or two and have been using it and are comfortable with it, they will then send their experts to our landfill for up to two days to evaluate how we are utilizing the equipment and provide recommendations for improvement. And, you know, again, the goal is to, to use what we have most efficiently. And we think having an outside expert come in will give us a fresh perspective and be able to provide us insights that maybe we wouldn't see because we're too close to the, the actual work that's being done. And so that's part of it. And then the training part of it, some of that is related to KDHE's required annual training. It is beneficial, again, to have an outside voice, provide some of that information. uh, rather than, uh, the staff listening to me talk about safety and, and the things that we need to do. Uh, having that fresh, uh, perspective from somebody new once in a while is beneficial for staff.
Not only expertise, but some of the preconceived notions.
Correct, correct.
All right. There's a fee schedule, um, attached, 'cause there's various services that we can utilize. So, it's not, uh, as simple as a, uh, one dollar rate, and you can reference that fee schedule. Uh, let's go, uh, Commissioner Dunn, you have any thoughts on, uh, on this?
Uh, could you review that, uh, fee schedule, David?
Yes, I've reviewed it.
I think it's, uh, under Attachment Ten, um,
Yeah, it's.
Relatively the second page of Attachment Ten.
Yeah, see, I'm looking at it right now. I could, I could see it. I just, uh, what's, what's the total dollars gonna look like?
Uh, what I would be looking at is approximately seventy-five hundred dollars. That would include the mobilization per diem. That's bringing in their folks. Uh, they're not local, uh, to us, but they would come in. Uh, and then I would recommend the two-day assessment. I want the, um, right off the get-go, I want our folks to have the, um, uh, the best resources available to them so that we set the foundation for everything that we do moving forward. So, I would, I would ask for the two-day assessment, um, and then the follow-up reporting, which would give us the results of that assessment. And then they, I would also ask for the annual compliance training. If I added all that up, it came to, um, uh, seventy-five hundred dollars. So, uh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Dunn, that, I'd be for that. I think it's a good investment.
Good deal. Uh, Commissioner Stottermeyer?
I don't have a problem. I think David's headed the right way.
All right. Commissioner Dickinson?
Um, I have one quick question. It sounds like that our finances are in pretty good shape, that we could probably do something like this without it affecting bottom line budget really, at all, very much at all?
That, that is correct. Um, it, it, it would come out of the special caps fund, uh, which is, a- as was mentioned earlier, uh, the special caps has a very narrowly defined, um, uh, scope. Uh, so the use of those dollars are limited to landfill, solid waste functions. And, and this operational training and assessment fits the, fits the bill, so to speak. So, uh, we could pay for this without it affecting any of our budgeted line items.
And I would just like to say that, that, um, this is Commissioner Dickinson, that, um, the fact that you had such a rough first year and how long you've been on the job, and yet you took this as a priority, um, which it probably should have been a priority, um, is really a test to your ability to do the job that you do. I appreciate you.
Well, I, I appreciate that, but th- this is not a, a one-man job. Uh, this is a total team effort on, on, uh, not just the solid waste, but the whole public works organization. This doesn't happen without all of them.
All right. Commissioner Howard?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
All right. As am I. I think, uh, once we get, uh, uh, path forward, the tools our, our folks need out there, that, uh, this operational assessment training be money well spent. So. Any other questions? Go ahead, Da- uh, Derek?
This is one, um, given that the cost is seventy-five hundred dollars, that is within my spending allowance. It sounds like there is a consensus on the board to go ahead and do that. This is an item I am not inclined to bring back for a formal vote, as I can just approve it, provided the board's okay with that.
All right. And David, you said this is something we would hold off until probably we had like the compactor and we were set up the way that we were going to, obviously going to train the way you were going to be moving forward?
Exactly. That's, that's when we would, um, you know, we can sign the proposal now, uh, but the work actually wouldn't start until, until we give them the, the, you know, approval to move forward. Um, and so I would, that's probably the path that I would take. Let's get it signed now. Uh, get it, you know, on, on their books so that they are aware that it's coming and that, uh, I will work with them on, on the timing of, of said, um, you know, the start of that project for them.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Dickinson, I heard you speak. Were you?
Yes, I just had, this is Commissioner, 'cause I, I did have one more comment. I think this really goes to show that, I mean, maybe everybody is as ignorant as I am, but, but to work out at the landfill, you gotta have more than, yeah. I mean, it takes, it takes knowledge and expertise to do it right, and I think we're definitely moving in the right direction.
Great. Any other final comments on this from the commissioners or staff?
I just appreciate you bearing with me as we, uh, took a deep dive into, uh, what is, you know, a, a complex, um, issue and with lots of moving parts. So, I appreciate your time.
All right. Any final, go ahead, Derek?
Yeah, before we move on, I just wanna make sure we're all clear. Um, there are two items at this point that David and I are gonna bring back before you next week. The acquisition of the compactor and the contract for the feasibility study. We're gonna hold off on the landfill fees until after we have the feasibility study. The increase from ten percent to twenty percent, we are going to do without a motion if that's really an accounting mechanism as much as anything. And then the last item regarding the training, given where it's at, at seventy-five hundred, I will authorize that under my purchasing authority. I just wanna make sure that is the understanding of the board.
That very well sums up what we talked about today. Uh, any other final thoughts from the commissioners?
I agree with Derek's statement.
All right. Thank you, Don. Uh.
Commissioner Dunn, I, I'll go along with that.
All right.
Commissioner Howard, too.
All right.
Yeah, all, all good. Dickinson?
All right, and I agree. Well, thank you. We had a good conversation on this, so. Move down to staff reports. Derek?
Now, we've got other items yet, Cole.
Yes, we do. We sure do. Number five is, uh, considered for approval authorizing the clerk to consent to the Public Building Commission calling of the Series 2011 lease revenue bonds for payment on September first, 2020.
Yeah, so this is part of our effort to refinance the, the bonds on the juvenile detention center. Um, Janet and I had a meeting yesterday with David Artterberry, our financial advisor, as well as Tyler Ellsworth, the bond counsel. They are both on the line this morning. Um, based on those bids, I, I think staff is going to recommend that we call a bit of an audible here and, and, uh, take a different course of action. But I wanna turn this over to David Artterberry and let him talk us through that.
All right. Can everybody hear me okay?
Sure can, Dave.
Okay, good, good. Um, um, Derek, did you want me to go in to depth about the results of the, um, proposals? Or did you just want me to talk a little bit about, um, authorizing proceeding with calling the bonds, but, but give Janet the flexibility to do it at some date other than September one?
Well, I think that I would like you to talk the board in-depth through the results because it's ultimately those results, David, that are driving us to pursue a different course of action here.
Okay, sure, sure. Be happy to do that. Um, first of all, um, good morning, everybody. Um, if you recall, um, last time I visited with the commission, we were talking about, um, the refinancing of, um, some outstanding public building commission bonds, um, that, that the county has for the juvenile detention facility. And, um, as part of that, um, that presentation, we talked about, um, trying to, um, when offering the bond, trying to go down a little bit different path than the county has historically taken when selling bonds. Um, given some, you know, turmoil that's been in the financial markets since the, um, COVID pandemic hit, um, I thought maybe what we were trying to do is a private placement, where instead of selling the bonds to an underwriting firm who then turns around and sells the bonds to multiple investors, we would instead try going directly to banks to see if they would be willing to purchase the bonds themselves. Um, sort of, you kind of eliminate the middleman, the, the underwriter of the bonds. And, um, so we took that approach and we sent out, uh, requests for proposals, or Janet did, with our assistants, um, to several dozen, um, banks, um, both in the county and, and the state and in the entire sort of region. Um, and we ended up getting proposal back, proposals back yesterday. Um, we ended up getting three proposals, um, one from Kansas State Bank, um, one from, um, Capital One, and one from Bank of Oklahoma. Uh, those last two purchases, those last two banks are, are very active in, in directly purchasing municipal bonds. Um, unfortunately, the, the results that we got back from all of those three banks were, were not as good as I had hoped. Um, I was really hoping for an interest rate of somewhere in the neighborhood of, um, you know, one and a half to one and three-quarters percent. Um, the best interest rate, um, was submitted by Bank of Oklahoma at one point nine-two percent. Um, Kansas State Bank was at two point two-five percent, and Capital One was at two point seven-five percent. Um, I, I ended up actually, after we got those results back, I, I called around and talked to not only those banks, but some other banks about, um, you know, wasn't there a little better interest rate? Why was I off a little bit? And what I kind of come to find out is a couple of things. First of all, um, because of the, you know, COVID pandemic and the impact on the financial markets, um, a lot of these direct purchasers of bonds have been very, very busy and have been buying a lot of bonds over the last few months, um, to the point that they don't have as much appetite right now to purchase bonds. Um, a- another thing that came into place and feedback that I got was, um, that, that the Public Building Commission structure, which, which is a very popular structure for, for Kansas counties to use, um, to finance building projects. Um, unfortunately, it's, as far as banks outside of the Kansas region, they, they really just don't understand the structure very well. So, I, I think those combinations of things kind of caused the, the bidding to, to be somewhat overwhelming. Um, where, where does that sort of leave us? Um, you know, initially, wh- um, when we met with the county, we anticipated, um, saving about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We, um, the, I, I just updated the interest rates based on, um, another recent Public Building Commission issue that was sold in Kansas. Um, this was sold at, um, public offering, not a private placement. And in the public offering, um, based on those rates, I would have estimated that the company would have been able to save right around three hundred and forty thousand dollars or so. Um, so that was sort of my benchmark, was about a three hundred and forty thousand dollar target. The Bank of Oklahoma bid, um, would generate about three hundred thousand dollars of savings. Unfortunately, the bid contained a lot of extra terms and conditions on it, um, which, some of which, um, might not be able to be overcome or could cause us to have to delay our schedule. Um, and so even though it generated three hundred thousand dollars of savings, I, I, I were not real optimistic that their bid actually would be able to be completed in the way they presented it to us. Uh, the, the local bid by Kansas State Bank at two point two-five percent generated about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of savings. Um, so, you know, that's the better part of eighty-five or ninety thousand dollars less than we think we could get if we were to do the public offering of bonds today. So, after we discussed all this yesterday afternoon with Derek and Janet, I, I think the conclusion that we came to is, um, of course, this is a decision that, you know, the Public Building Commission would have to make. But I think we've kind of came to the conclusion that, um, we think instead of proceed with the private placement, which was the path we initially went down, um, maybe our best course of action here is to go ahead, back and proceed with a traditional public offering of bonds, where we get in a rating, we do a disclosure document, um, and we market the bonds through an underwriting firm who would sell the bonds to other investors. Um, we, we felt that there was enough difference in the savings level between, um, the, the bid by Kansas State Bank, which was really the only, the, the best fully complying bid we got. And with where interest rates are right now, that even if there was some change in rates over the coming, you know, forty-five to sixty days, we would still, um, be in a, a position of saving more money by, by going down this other path. So, I, I know I spoke a lot here, and I, I hope I, my connection was clear and everybody heard everything I had to say. Um, but obviously welcome any questions you might have.
Uh, we, I think we heard you very well, David. Uh, you're telling us that private placement got us, uh, some good offers and, uh, would potentially save us two hundred and fifty thousand. But, uh, is your view and staff's recommendation that public offering may be a, uh, still yet a better way to move forward and, uh, from what we're seeing, could potentially save us maybe another hundred thousand? We're hoping?
Eighty, eighty to a hundred thousand, yeah.
All right, that's the hope. So, any commissioners, uh, have questions or comments on this one? Let's start with, uh, Don?
Yeah, I appreciate Mr. Artterberry researching this and taking it to heart. And I think, uh, he's got the right idea with going back to, uh, the other plan with the offering that, uh, it was a good shot the other way, but it just, uh, with every, the way the world's acting now, you can't tell nothing. So, I agree with, uh, going the other way.
All right. Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes, I have one quick question. Um, where do you see the interest rates? Are they, which way are they going at this point?
Um, that's, that's a good question. We actually talked quite about, bit about that yesterday, too, with Derek and Janet. And, you know, I, I think, obviously, you know, I don't have a crystal ball or anything, but, you know, given, um, situation with the COVID pandemic and, you know, the, the negative pressure that that puts on to the economy, um, you know, it, it just seems to us that there's not going to be a lot of upward pressure on rates, you know, at least over the next, you know, forty-five to sixty days, which is about how long it would take us to, to get the public offering completed. So, so we think, we're, we're hoping that, uh, rates can remain stable. You know, even if they do creep up a little bit, uh, I think that, that we would still be in a position of saving more than the two hundred and fifty thousand from, you know, the best complying bid.
So, your recommendation would, this is Commissioner Dickinson, your recommendation would be to go ahead and do that at this point and not wait for forty-five to sixty days?
Well, it, it's gonna take, in order to, um, do the public offering, it's gonna take about, about forty-five to sixty days to prepare the necessary documents and, and get the rating completed. Um, so that's what I was just think, talking about was that I think in that period of time, um, forty-five, sixty days of waiting to get ready for the public offering, uh, I, we're, we're hoping that there won't be really much upward pressure or movement in the interest rates.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Howard?
Yeah, I, I agree. And I've, uh, David's always done his research and done what's best for, for the county, and I don't feel this is any different. And I would go along with what he recommends.
All right. Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, I'd too, go along with, recommend and go back the way we've done it in the past.
You're for a public offering, going forward with that option, sounds like.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, as am I, I agree. Uh, so David, Derek, help me out. Uh, this action that's, uh, in front of us on, on your, uh, on this. on on your, on this agenda item to authorize the county clerk to consent to the Public Building Commission calling the 2011 lease revenue bonds for payment on September 1, we need to move forward with that? Or?
Well, not exactly, no. I, what I would like to see, and David, jump in at any time, is I do think the county, the county clerk still needs that consent. But what I would like you to do is remove the September 1, because that timeline was based on our initial course of action. That has potentially changed. So I think the motion would read, you know, consent for approval authorizing the county clerk to consent to the Public Building Commission calling the Series 2011 lease revenue bonds for payment. And you just leave the date out of there. That way Janet has already gotten the consent. That'll save us a step down the line, but it doesn't bind us to that date as we're not sure that we will adhere to that at this point.
Very well, glad we clarified. David Artterberry, do you agree?
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good to me. And I I know Tyler is on the phone, on the line here also. If he if he has any objections, I I know he'll chime in.
No, that that's, this is Tyler. Thanks, David. That's, that's exactly, that's how the motion should read.
Great, thanks. I'm glad to hear, Tyler. Well, it sounds like everybody's in favor of moving forward with the public offering. And that motion would, if someone would like to make a motion, and the affirmative would be to authorize the county clerk to consent to the Public Building Commission for calling the Series 2011 lease revenue bonds for payment. Would somebody like to make a motion to that effect?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll make that motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Commissioner.
Not like Commissioner Dunn got in there first with a second?
Commissioner Sotomayor, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. All right. Now, we're done with our items of business.
Hey, Cole?
Yeah, go ahead, Dave. Derek?
Before, before I let David and Tyler go, we had originally noticed a Public Building Commission meeting after this. The purpose of that was to let, was to select the winning bidder for refinancing those bonds. David or probably Tyler, is there any need to convene that meeting at this point?
This is, this is Tyler. There's not. We will, we will proceed based on county commission's direction this morning to regroup and solicit bids from underwriters for the public offering instead of the private placement. And once we receive those proposals back from underwriters, we will be back before the PBC probably sometime in a month. So there, long story short, there's no action that the PBC needs to take today.
Okay, very good.
All right. Thank you, David and Tyler, for being here. And
Yes, thank you.
Let's go to staff reports. Derek?
All right. We continue, obviously, to to fight our battle against COVID-19. For my office, currently, that involves a lot of questions about the spark funding that we've talked about several times. We continue to get ever evolving guidance from the state. So county staff, Janet and I in particular, are trying to stay on top of that, have been getting calls from the superintendents on eligible funding items, have had several of our community partners reach out as well regarding eligibility for funding. So we are currently working through that process. I have executed our contract with our consulting firm. So we are in the process of getting them mobilized so that they can jump in and help with that. Another topic that is, it's troubling to me, but it involves the opening of schools. There's still a lot of questions about what role counties specifically play in that. And and there's not a lot of guidance currently to go on. You know, I I've had, I've had discussions with superintendents where, you know, they are looking for guidance from us on opening of their schools and best practices. And and obviously, as county commissioners and county staff, that that's not our area of expertise. And so we're all kind of looking towards the state. And and they released some guidance. Unfortunately, it's about eleven hundred pages. And it's, it's hard to reconcile. So not that I have read all eleven hundred pages of that, mind you, but I've read enough of it that there are certain sections that are hard to reconcile with other sections. And so I don't envy the superintendents, nor do I envy local municipalities, because it's, this is a difficult time, and we we really need more guidance to to be able to provide good help to these schools. But suffice to say, we're, we're doing what we can to work with them. We want to help them in any way that we can. And and that's what we're striving to do. And so I would look for the state to continue to issue guidance and direction. And I'm looking forward to receiving that. It it's hard, you know, in a normal year, budget is is huge right now. And Janet and I are working to refine those numbers and and get those into our final spreadsheets. And we're looking at what the mill looks like and what it's going to do. We have yet to do that. With the pressure being placed on us with COVID, as well as the major election season, the two of us have yet had the opportunity to sit down, hope to do that yet this week or next week. But it won't be long before we have a draft of that in front of you. And certainly, the expectation is looking for early August approval, which is what we've done every year that we've run this budget. And so unless you have any questions, I don't have anything else to add this morning.
Good. I hear silence. So thank you, Derek. Let's move down the list to Nick. Are you on, Nick?
Good morning, Commissioner. This is Nick.
Go ahead.
We have, again, been dealing with the COVID response, as we talked about. Yeah. The, there've been a lot of recent activities with the schools, with people wanting to hold events. There was a street dance that was scheduled the 25th of July. That has now been canceled due to COVID. A woman had reached out to us about things that concern them. Dr. Ransom, myself have worked with them on that. The Ottawa University is bringing students back, and they are reaching out to us for guidance, help with some testing. Their goal is to try to test all seven hundred and some students that come into our community. So that's a big undertaking we're working with. We have been receiving a lot of complaints from upset people about tests. We don't have any control over how fast we get tests back. Quest, right now, we have tests that are still from seven, six that we haven't got results on. We don't have the power to make those come back. I understand frustration, but we do have people that are pretty upset that they're not coming back as fast as they would like. With that, we keep getting pushback on rapid testing. I know I've spoken to you many times about we're in line to get rapid testing in our community. And that keeps getting pushed other places, and we're not getting it. So we're still a month or so out from that, which I was hopeful we'd have it by now. Nursing facilities continue to stay in lockdown. Some of them have heightened their, their visitation policies back up due to the increase in COVID that we're seeing. After doing this, we're working closely EMS, emergency management, myself have worked close with the first responders to look at response guidelines, making sure that there's plenty of PPE out for our first responders and policies to help keep them safe. We, we continue to test a lot of people. The contact casing is one of the things that they are still pushing that we do. Just yesterday alone, we did, I think, forty to fifty some people. So what we're figuring out with testing is just getting these tests back and passing them into battle. With that, like Derek talked about, superintendents, we've been having opening meetings, the state and the Health Department, the eleven hundred page document. And there are things in that document that don't go hand in hand with other sections of that document. So those will be some things that we're going to have to navigate. The other thing in the Health Department that we're starting to see is parents reaching out to us wanting to get school vaccines, children, and how we're going to handle that. So that's a priority of how we're going to, we're going to bring a lot of people into the Health Department, we're going to try off-site vaccination techniques, see what we're going to do. So those are things that are happening right now in the Health Department. Are there any questions on the Health Department before I move EMS and 911?
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I have a question, and it's kind of maybe personal. But what are the chances of getting a false negative or a false positive test? Or how do you, how?
The chances of false positive are are very slim. They're doing a PC bar test, which they're looking for particular shows of virus. Or if it's a positive test, there is a particular virus. False negatives, the reason those happen is because the test isn't done appropriately. The person hasn't started to develop the virus yet, so they've been tested too early. Or, like I said, the the gold standard is to do a nasal swab and swab both there. Some places are not going all the way into those vaccines. They're all pharynx. So there is nothing to call negative, but they're very bad to use in a false positive.
And and the reason I ask is because I have a a family member that was tested positive and other family members, close family members that spent a lot of time, all came back negative. And it just doesn't make a lot of sense because they have the same symptoms as the positive person. So we were really questioning whether that negative is really a negative.
And like I said with that, one of the, one of the hardest decisions Dr. Ransom and myself and my staff have to make when we're doing contact tracing is what is a good time to test. You have a fourteen day period from contact of a positive patient who developed the symptom. It takes forty-eight hours to become contagious after contact. So if you look at the results coming back and that, if if we test somewhere around six, seven day mark of contact, we should get those back within three or four days. We should have a pretty good idea whether or not they're positive. That's why even after we give the results of negative, we're still asking for quarantine, because if you are a close household contact, your chances of getting COVID-19 is very good. So we're testing to hopefully give us an idea and the family members an idea whether they they have an active virus or not. But also, you need to quarantine if you do have negative and a close contact.
Thank you.
All right. Did it look like there's any questions on the Health Department? Do you have more to talk about, Nick?
Just on the EMS, I do want to, we have had some talks from Anderson County lately. You utilize our psychiatric unit. So words out that we have been utilizing that in other communities as well as ours. So that's a good purchase. And we do have the ability to share that with our neighbors. As I passed about, there is EMS kind of driving force in the in the contacts for first responders and COVID response. With that, we have put in practices to ensure safety or to help put the safety, which means they may not be first responders arriving before EMS on the phone. And I want people to be aware of that. But we are looking at the best practice for everybody and the best safety for our patients. We are full stop in EMS, and the call volume continues to increase back up to the, for prior to COVID. And 911, our full stop there, we are continuing to see an increasing call volume. Derek and I did meet with the nation on the meeting, and they had to discuss the third part of the 911 budget. That conversation went very well. They did have a few questions on some numbers. In the process of finishing those, and she knows over to Derek. But that meeting, I thought, went really well. And that's what I have.
All right. Thank you, Nick. Any questions for Nick? Sounds like it. Sheriff Richards, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay. I just said, we've, we're kind of plugging away still. We have a lot of our same procedures in in place and protections in place for all the COVID stuff. Our jail count is still climbing. We are still up in the sixties, and it does not look like that's probably going to decrease at all. So we're getting back pretty close to almost the pre-pandemic numbers. As far as calls for service, we're seeing an increase in activity. So we've been a lot, we've been very busy with that. And we had a foundation, Sheriff's Foundation Board Meeting this week. And that, at that time, they approved for us to start, as you know, the foundation funds most of our canine program, and they and they back that. We have one of our canines that is about at the end of his working life. And so we are starting the process to find a replacement for that, for that canine at this point. So those dogs come in from out of country. So it does, it, they're, it is going to take a little while to happen. But we do have the ball rolling on on that right now. And hopefully, hopefully, that ends up being a, being a good process that we can get wrapped up here within the next few months. So that's really about all we have right now. If there are any questions for me, I'll, I'll answer.
No hearing any. Thanks for the report, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All right. Larry, are you still on?
I'm still here, Mr. Chairman.
All righty. Did you have anything you needed to report?
Yes, I have received an inquiry from Southern Star with their pipeline project. They're going to be doing some blasting, and they wanted to know if any special permits were required. I've reviewed our regulations, and I don't find anything other than, I do know that they will have to comply with the state fire marshal's requirements. So you probably will be getting some, some complaints and certainly some inquiries regarding what's happening when the this blasting starts. Because this, as you know, is a fairly good size pipe that they're doing the replacements and, and goes through a lot of rock in different areas. So there are going to be some blasting. And the only thing that I was assured that they needed to do as far as the county's concerned is to notify the sheriff, as well as Alan Radcliffe. But I did want to let you know that you probably will be getting some inquiries on this.
All right. Good to know. Thanks for, thank you for letting us know. David Lee?
Yes. All right. So last week, we finished up the project on California and Sand Creek. And then we moved right into a major ditching and road job. Sand Creek, uh, and then we moved right into a major ditching and road job on Nevada Terrace between Marshall and Kingman. Uh, the project started last Wednesday and will probably carry through, through the end of the week. Um, that's ditching and, and rebuilding the road as well. So, they're, they're hard at it and looks really good out there. Uh, once that one is done, our next couple of big projects are replacing the small bridge on Ohio south of Haskell, and replacing the low-water crossing on Haskell east of Ohio. So, right in the same area, we'll be working. Uh, I was contacted by a local citizen, uh, that has requested a speed limit sign on Shawnee east of K-33. Uh, this is a main road from Franklin County to Hillsdale Lake. And according to the citizen, there's a lot of, uh, folks that travel at a high rate of speed through there. And, um, uh, as you know, speed limit signs are, are something that, uh, we should probably never do without having a, um, a traffic study done. That's the, the recommendation from the, um, Manual of Uniform Traffic Control. Um, and so, I have, uh, asked CFS engineers, uh, for a proposal for such a, uh, traffic study. So, depending on, uh, how that comes back, that may be, uh, an item that comes before you next month. Um, uh, we also had a pre-construction meeting on Iowa Terrace yesterday, and we anticipate, uh, that project getting started, uh, no later than August tenth. Uh, currently, the contractor's waiting on, uh, the two pipes to be fabricated, uh, and then they'll get, get to work. We've got a few, uh, small little details to work out, but, uh, I think that's gonna go, um, that project's gonna go well and, and will go quickly also. Um, we have also been, um, in addition to everything else, we've been actively locating and measuring areas of, of, to bring before you for a, uh, dis- distressed pavement project, uh, asphalt patching and overlay, uh, project is what that would be. So, we are, uh, I'm not sure that I'll have everything, uh, put together by next Wednesday, but that's what I'm shooting for. So, uh, it's quite possible that we'll have that before you next week. If it's not next week, it'll definitely be the week after, uh, 'cause we need to get, get that going. Um, so, and then the last thing, uh, I know we talked about a compactor earlier. We do have a motor grader that is, uh, the lease, uh, time is gonna be up on that next month. And so, we are evaluating, um, what we're gonna do next, what type of motor grader we're gonna be getting. So, that, that will also be an agenda item that, uh, that will be before you before long.
Any questions for David, the Public Works Department?
Is that greater, David, the, with the new extended hours?
Yes, we would, uh, I, I, I believe that, uh, going to the seven-year timeframe is, is worth the, uh, the investment. And, and we will be looking at, uh, that sort of timeframe, uh, for the next, uh, for the next blade that we get.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Janet?
Okay, Commissioners, I just wanna let you guys know that, um, today will be the, um, main push on our advanced ballots. We'll send, um, close to fifteen hundred out the door today. And, uh, most of those, I think, are stemming from the mailing that we did earlier. We will still be accepting advanced ballot applications, um, and sending those out as they come in. Um, yesterday, we did a major, um, moving project in my office to prepare for early voting. We'll start early voting on Monday in my office. So, um, we've pushed the counter back and made plenty of room, um, for people to, um, come in and kind of flow through the office, um, so they don't have to be, um, close to each other and hopefully alleviate the crowding that has happened previously in there during early voting. So, just a lot of election things coming up. And, um, yesterday was the deadline to register to vote, so we're wrapping all those up and finalizing our voter rules for the, for the August primary. So, that's what's going on.
All right. Go ahead, Doc.
Dude, is this, on the voting deal, is it just that well? They don't have to make an appointment or anything, do they?
No, they don't need to make an appointment at all. It's their, it's their right to be able to vote, and, um, we will let them in and they will be able to vote. Um, we are, as you know, uh, asking for people to wear masks when they come in the courthouse. So, that won't be, really be any different for voting. We'll ask them to adhere to the rules of the courthouse, which is to wear a mask in the courthouse. But, um, we'll get you all signed up to vote early. And as you guys know, um, we did close a few polling locations. Um, I sent out notice to all of those voters that we closed their locations down. And Casey did, um, post those locations that were closed out on social media. And so, we've already notified all those people. But if anyone has any questions in advance about where they should go vote on Election Day, they can certainly feel free to contact us, and we can get that information out to them. So, uh, but all of our, um, polling locations, well, the majority of our polling locations will remain open. We'll have sixteen polling locations open on Election Day. So, everyone can feel, um, safe and secure going out to those polling locations.
Hi, Janet.
Yes.
Where's Peoria going?
Uh, Peoria will be voting at Trinity Church in Ottawa on the north side.
Oh, go, okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Janet. Uh, we've moved on to Commissioners' comments and Board Reports. Let's start with Don.
Yeah, I, I did go to actually two meetings, believe it or not, actually face-to-face. They were very good about spreading us apart, and, uh, most people wear masks, so it, it was, uh, it was, they're trying, most of them are trying to do. I went to Wellsville meeting. Uh, there're a long discussion up there on, uh, of course, redoing the bridge over the railroad tracks there, right where, if you, I know where, uh, uh, fiber lane is and right there. And there'd been a lot of discussion over, uh, uh, with KDOT on, uh, drainage and so forth. So, that's kind of a pretty long, ongoing discussion right now, uh, with the city and the landowners and KDOT. So, it's, they're trying to get it resolved. Uh, there was, uh, uh, announced, I'm not sure if the federal grant or state grant, uh, Sheriff Richards could probably tell me. But they did, the police department up there did receive a cops grant for, in the neighborhood of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. That's a three-year grant, and that will, uh, actually pretty well pay for an officer, for one officer for three years in Wellsville. Uh, they are, they did set up their, start talking on their, uh, budget, uh, end of this month. I don't know the exact date, but I know they did set up their meeting with their accountant, and they'll be meeting and, uh, going over their budget. Uh, I went to Lane, hadn't been there about four months. So, uh, uh, right, they had a long session after I left. Uh, they were meeting with their county attorney, uh, county attorney, city attorney, to redo a lot of their job descriptions and talk over several other issues that they had. Um, I did notice down there, David, you still on the line?
Yes, sir.
I did notice there were some survey markers out on Virginia, out there north of the bridges. Do you know anything?
They are still, uh, still working on those plans. It should be in design mode. Uh, I've asked for a, kind of a status update on that, but haven't received anything back yet.
Okay. Uh, I did, I just told them if I noticed that survey marker out there, uh, I, I told them it was just in the beginning process. But you had been working on that for a long time to get the funding to be able to move forward with that. So, it wasn't gonna happen. It's just gonna take a little while to happen. I noticed one thing, I'm sure it's just a missed, or, but on our, uh, meetings coming up, it has a study session on July the seventeenth. I'm sure that's probably supposed to be the twenty-seventh, right?
Yes.
Might wanna change that in case people are looking out there and wondering why we're having a meeting on Friday, but, and try to attend or figure it out or something. So, that's all I got. Thank you.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
This is Sheriff Richards. Uh, what, uh, Commissioner Sotomayor was talking about there on the, uh, Wellsville Police Department grant, um, just so you guys are aware, typically what that grant is, is it, um, it funds a, a school resource officer, and it ends up having to be half-funded by the city, half by the, the district. They rewrote their grant this time, and they received a grant that they can use that officer, um, at, in any capacity. So, it does not necessarily have to be in the school. So, uh, they, they did a good job on that. They contracted out their grant with the grant writer, and, uh, that was a very positive thing for, uh, for the community of Wellsville and the county as a whole.
Thank you, Jeff.
Commissioner Howard?
Uh, I don't have anything to add at this time.
All right. Commissioner Dickinson?
Um, I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting yesterday morning via Zoom. Um, of course, a lot of the discussion still goes around COVID, um, how much to do, how, how quick to open, how quick to start things. Um, I know that they were gonna have a Travis Martin, um, Marvin concert in maybe August that they've decided to push back, um, again. So, I think I'll still, we are still waiting for this to subside a little before, I mean, I think it has to subside before school, or we're gonna be dealing with it for a long time. But one of the things they did talk about is there is gonna be a candidate forum. They're gonna have it at Legacy Square. Um, I can't remember the exact date, but they are gonna try and put it online also. So, if you can attend or you don't want to attend, um, physically, you can still get that information. So, that might be something, especially if you, as you go through the primary, to kind of know before you go to the polls who you wanna vote for. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Dunn?
Uh, like I have, I think the governor's got a news conference coming up this afternoon. Um, that, that's all I have.
All right. I also don't have anything I need to add. Uh, so with that, uh, no one else, uh, chimes in, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
This is Don's motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Commissioner Dunn, second.
All right. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.